At four o'clock, I'll call to meet our study session order if we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here for our school board study session. Today, we are going to be talking about a couple of things. One is just preparation for the Washington State School Directors Association General Assembly that's coming up on the 20th. Thankfully, it's only one day, not two. We're gonna talk about cabinet objectives and board priorities. So, we will kick it off and we'll start with Brittany.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just going through. Thank you, everybody, for filling out the spreadsheet. It's very helpful to give us an idea of where we are aligned already and where we need to do some discussion. This is really helpful for me because I want to make sure that the votes I enter during the General Assembly are reflective of our board opinion. So, the first one, I guess we'll just kind of go down the list because they kind of actually happen to go in order of probably importance. So, the first one where there was a little bit of variation was on the amendments, on Article 14. This one is on page 18 of the General Handbook. So, I don't know if Lance, if you, oh, you're already there. Great. So, this one is a proposal that they amend the WASDA bylaws that proposals be submitted 180 days in advance of General Assembly versus, right now, they're 90 days in advance. So, we're about evenly split on this, and so I'm just curious to know people's rationale behind their votes just so that we can come to a consensus and then I can know how to vote.
I mean, we, sure, yeah, we were just talking about this. So, first, this is just for anybody listening or that's here. So, WASDA is the body that we have the ability to hopefully affect change when it comes to priorities and such within the state, right? So, this is kind of how we affect that change by voting on these. This amendment, I wasn't necessarily opposed to changing the days. My concern was moving it from 90 days to 180. Would they, there's, I didn't see any communication saying that once that 180 days is passed that you could submit anything for the current year. So, a lot of times, at least the time I've been on the board, things come up 90 days, 120 days before the assembly, and that's when boards do a resolution, they get it changed through the process to get it on essentially the ballot. So, my only concern was this was, is 180 days that cut off now. So, that means that we only have the first six months to effectively submit anything to change at WASDA, and then the second half of the year, we would be, it is what it is, and we have to wait till the next year to do it. So, I was hoping personally that during this, someone maybe makes a motion to amend it to like 120 days and kind of finds that middle ground. But I'm not opposed to changing it, I just, the daytime frame, just was a little, seems a little long personally.
So, that raises a good question. Is there, you know, right now, the majority says no, but is there a range that I can listen for? And if they amended to within the range that we are a yes vote?
I guess my feeling is, is I think giving people three months is plenty of time for them to go through their proposal and review it. I don't think we need to, why do we need to give them more time? I mean, I don't know. I don't, three months, I can do most things I need to do in three months.
Good for you. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
As a government body, I have very little, like, my feeling is, 90 days is fine. They don't need six months.
We're voting to say like, yes, you can be less efficient.
Exactly. We can be, we can be less efficient. We can, in a sense, stymie democracy, I guess you'd say, by making it even harder for people to get things through because they've got to do it so far in advance that if it's an issue that needs to be addressed, it, that WASDA has time to try to suppress it if they wanted to. I guess that's just my feeling. I, I don't know. I, my feeling was is 90 days is plenty. Like I said, I can do anything and pretty much figure out what I need to in three months.
Okay. So, are you like a hard 90 days, like anything, if they amended it to 110 or something like that?
My question is, is why are they changing?
I can't answer that, and I was a yes vote because I'm just going off of the recommendation and the explanation of why they want to do it. But it's not, I don't, I'm not a yes vote enough that I can or want to defend their position, so I don't know.
They're saying, they say in 90 days, it's inadequate for the board to consider the impact, hold a board meeting, discuss it, and vote on the recommendation, and get it into the publication of the assembly thing. So, again, again, my, I mean, I guess I lean more towards no if it's 180 days and a hard.
Again, I guess I, my private response is, are you kidding?
Okay, so, okay.
90 days, that's three months.
I wasn't strong either way, but I feel like they've kind of.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not strong enough to fight for a yes vote either. I just wanted to know if there's a range.
I just looked at it and go, why are we giving more time for bureaucrats to do nothing?
Fair enough. Okay, good. Okay, no one. Perfect.
I'm not diehard. I just, it's.
You kind of sound diehard.
I just, it's silly.
You were, you were, again, this is, you know, government work. We have to, what we do in the private sector, you know, we make decisions immediately. You don't get 90 days to decide if you're gonna stop the waiting, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do it right now. So, it's just a whole different deal. Again, I truly don't care, but it's, again, you always have to remember who you're dealing with. So.
Fair enough.
And I would just say, if there's an amendment, you can make a judgment call. You can shoot a call to a couple of us.
Fair enough. I can tell you my experience is it won't matter much.
Yeah, that's my feeling. All this stuff doesn't.
It won't matter much. I mostly just want to make sure that our vote is reflective of what your opinions are, but really, in the outcome of things, it probably won't affect much. So, okay.
So, we go through this?
Yeah, I know.
We go through this process anyway, even though we all know it makes no difference.
Good exercise. Okay, so, the one that I think that we need some education on is number four. This is on page 31 of the handbook, and this is about budget stability. There's.
Do you, just for the sake of clarity, because this is a public meeting, what might be a good idea is just go through each proposal and say, we've, as a group, have voted yes.
Before we get to.
You see what I'm saying? Just go through each one, so by the end, we'll have done everything, and then it's public information on what our group is.
So, yeah, super quick. Proposal two is a yes, proposal three is a yes, proposal four, we need some education on. So, this one is about budget stability. This one is proposing. They are, they, this one is saying, we want WASDA to work with the legislature and promote legislation that maintains levy authority despite declining enrollment or assessed value changes or state budget cuts. So, essentially, the proposal is asking WASDA to lobby the legislature to keep state, the funding the same regardless of changes in the environment, which was how I read it originally. But I've had some conversations with Lance to understand it a little better. So, do you want to speak to this a little bit first?
You'd like.
I would like because I think it would help.
Sorry, I'll turn that on. So, this one and the next one are, they're some, they're kind of tucked together. So, I want to, if I could talk about the timing one first and then maybe backwards, if that's okay for the board.
Looking at number five, actually.
And that's, and that's more equal. So, I can tell you from receiving funds and distribution of funds, it's way, it's more beneficial for districts to get those, that money earlier versus later. And in the rationale, you can see that there's been a push to actually take the funding and push it to the end. I would prefer that we get a majority of the funding upfront because that's where our costs here to get schools started are there. And if you want to true us up at the end of the year, I'm good with that because we can balance that. But if withholding at the end to true us up, that doesn't do us any good. It doesn't do us any good. It doesn't do any good with our employee relations, et cetera, when we're trying to do anticipated funds. We know that we have a, there's some enrollment, you know, adjustments that take place. So, I just, I'm fully supportive of anything that pushes the funding forward, not back. The second part of this, the way that I interpreted this, was on the levy authority, not the funding piece. So, levy authorities are typically associated with authority as in like how much, et cetera, market values and/or enrollment pieces. So, if you have a community that has something pretty, let's say drastic, like a mill shuts down or an industry shuts down, you can have some pretty steep, steep funding impacts. And so, one of the things that I think is valuable, especially on our side, if something were to happen to us, is that it wouldn't just drop, and we call those funding cliffs. So, you would be funded here, and then there's a significant drop. I would suggest and advocate for protections. That doesn't mean we're funding ghost children. That's not what I'm talking about. But remember, if this happens sometime during the year, when you already have your staffing established and the students don't show up, you're, in our business, we have contracts that we're obligated to fulfill. So, we're stuck there. And if you had a $2, $3 million, like change, and you are in a school district, for example, like a Prescott or Burbank or something like that, you're upside down, and then you're creating a pretty, pretty significant impact. So, my suggestion, if this is in alignment with reducing funding cliffs, I'd be extremely supportive of that and then pushing the funding towards the front of the school year. So, that's, those are the two items that I was looking at through those lens when I looked at funding stability. It's just, that's, just so you.
So, the proposed change would minimize?
So, the way that I'm reading this, it's, see, it talks about ensuring that districts maintain levy authority and looking at over kind of an average, and so you don't get a steep, like, all of a sudden, like, you know, PNL shuts down, and we're dropped like, you know, homes and kids and a bunch of shifts. Communities around our state, I can say that now, around our state who have like significant industries that are their sole provider, which could be manufacturing towns, timber towns, or something like that. This could be catastrophic if someone were to shut down in that district. So, I look at that gradual release and have some level of protections. Not that you get it all, but you're just not stuck, and now you're upside down in creating tenuous relationships with your staff.
Yeah, they're related.
Sorry, let me move to that.
No, yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah, we can talk about five as well.
I remember five, I remember thinking I'm a no on this one, but I don't remember why.
There.
Because of the word?
It's, hold on, it's gonna derail us a little bit. Let's finish this out. They're related because they're both funding, but that one's, that one will be an easy discussion. But, so, on this, on four, my hesitation on being a yes vote initially before we had a conversation was because I felt like, when I initially read it, I felt like it was guaranteeing districts steady and the same level of funding despite changing environments. But what Lance pointed out in an earlier conversation that he and I had is that this is just maintaining levy authority. So, it's not necessarily guaranteeing that school districts will receive the same level of funding. It's just saying, we're not going to change your authority to run a levy based on state budget cuts, decreased enrollment, or your changing valuation of the property. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and it provides a larger lens, so it's just not one year. So, you're getting, if you're getting a two-year average on your market value, and even if, you know, I was trying to look at three years on a market value, not necessarily one or two, because you could have bumps. Remember, a couple of years ago, the market values jumped like 20%. So, that's a big change, and, which is on the good side, but if it were to go the other way, that could be significantly different. So, I think looking at averages, I think that's a good lens.
Okay.
I agree with that. Mine will be a yes.
Okay, so we're a yes on them. Well, great. Or, it seems like it. Yeah. Did you have a question?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm a yes.
All right, so, five is the next one, and it is also a funding one, and it is essential, essentially, this was a big push during the legislative session this last year was, you know, we had our big three that we were pushing for, and the basis for pushing for those big three was coming back to, in the state constitution, it says that the state is required to fully, amply, and sustainably fund basic education. This is just asking that WASDA at least adds equitably funded in. That doesn't necessarily change the state constitution language, but that is another dynamic or another element that WASDA would start lobbying for. So, on that one, I actually, we kind of were in agreement on this one. This one, we had four against two, so I don't know that we really need to actually discuss this one. I think we were a no vote on this.
Yeah, the first one.
Unless there's anybody that wants to change their mind or lobby or discuss it differently.
I just want to make sure I go on record that this board supports fully funding.
Yes.
So, the change, I. Just change the word, my problem, I'll be honest, why I say no is equitable is a, is a difficult word to define. So, what one person calls equitable, another one might call not equitable. So, if we put it in a proposed amendment, I think, I think the current statement includes that. I, in our, there's enough laws and stuff to say that things have to be distributed. I, I think you're opening yourself up to a lot of argument on what, I mean, you see it in our, the two parties can't agree what equitable means.
It gives WASDA more flexibility to like.
I, I agree. That's exactly why, like, I didn't, I, I agree 100%. I just don't think that there's a good definition of what that means, and it gives it too much leeway to say, well, we're gonna fund the west side of the state at four times the amount of the east state because, or the east side because of whatever reason they want to make.
And that's equitable, and you can find a definition.
You can define that, and you can, you can defend that in any different, any way you want to. So, that was, that's some rationale behind what my vote was. Okay, we are a yes vote on six. We are a yes vote on seven. It looks like eight we might need to talk about because we only had two vote, there were three, four board members that didn't vote on that one. So, let's maybe look at eight. That's on page 37. And this one, I, I'm trying to remember, it's been a couple of days. I think, hold on, let me see if I can read my comment, what I was thinking.
This one consolidates like nine different positions into one, so it's hard to even.
And we talked about this a little bit. That was my problem, was I just needed to understand how it, mostly from your perspective, Lance, however it's currently arranged, do you see any problem with consolidating these nine things together? Are we gonna lose any, you know, ability to get funding or to fund programs any way differently if they're combined?
So, I guess I could probably go either way on this, and this is how I'll describe it. When you get line item funding, one, one way to, the upside of that is that you can maybe track that and/or ensure that that's coming. If there is a lump sum where things get grouped in, they could say, we are fully funding something when actually they are not. It then becomes collective or an aggregate. So, those are the cautions that I have when it comes to that. Do I think that having a zillion line items aren't great? Because you could run the risk of, one, just getting caught. At the same time, like I said, the, so the opposite side of that is the missing thing. The other part of this is when you're trying to, let's say, for example, look at, for lack of a better return, return on investment with, if you were to lump those nine categories together from a funding standpoint, would you be able to say, hey, you know, we're really, we have, you know, pre-K education is X, and this is Y, or bilingual is getting dumped into pre-K? I don't, I don't know about that as being able to say, and how do you lobby for more funding if it's all in an aggregate? So, those are some cautions or thoughts that I would have on that funding mechanism.
Yeah, honestly, and I don't.
I think I didn't even answer because I looked at this, and I was like, okay. From, I mean, remember, this is, all this is, is to put their position. This is a statement of position. It's not like it's, does anything in terms of laws or, yeah, I.
Yeah, that's true. I don't know, would you, from a, from a legislative standpoint, with your experience there, is there any benefit to consolidating them, keeping them separate?
You know, it's, I think trying to separate stuff out actually makes it a little easier because then you're going for specific items.
Yeah.
Again, trying to lump everything in, because again, when you talk about the transitional, again, the untransitional bilingual instruction program, okay, well, that's great, well, our need may be different than someone else's need. And so, again, when you're trying to match together, how's it, how's that look? You know, none of these things at any, every school will have different needs for every one of those programs. So, trying to lump together gets awful tough.
What gives more flexibility to the individual school district?
That's a fair question. It actually might be lumping them together.
What, what, what gives us the flexibility to do our own thing without state telling us?
And I would say, the short answer is they just gave us money, right? I mean, just like, like, here it is, and you do that. So, the question ends up being more like, how are we required to report back how dollars are being spent more than how they're coming in? Because there are times when dollars will come in, and then you, just their allocations based on a unit or a formula-driven component. To me, it's more about like, again, how do we report back? Because there are some instances where we are required to report back how dollars are being spent specifically to categorical types of allocations. So, if you want to just.
It gives the grid's flexibility, it helps where you're not being, not happy to be responsible for each one of these line items.
So, if they were, if, and I don't, I would, I have no illusions, not even, I haven't even been here for one second, but knowing how government agencies work, illusions that even if they were to lump them together, that we would have to not report back individually. So, if those coincide, so if the dollars came in, like, say, in a block grant, and we were able to flex them, because you could potentially say, so, and there are some overlaps, like you might have some bilingual with high poverty, for example, or equitable for, anyway, in those components. I just think it's the reporting side, the short answer.
It doesn't seem.
So, it's a.
I mean, the truth is.
It doesn't seem like it's one that we have a strong opinion about.
Five years ago, we looked, probably in the past five years, they were together, and somebody split them up in a five.
I know, probably, and honestly, this is probably gonna be another one where I don't know that our vote's gonna sway one way or the other, like.
I mean, this is not one that I would even say it'd be a priority. You're trying to ensure that funding's coming more so like, tell them how you do it.
Yeah.
Do you?
That would be my.
I'm, I'm just, I, yeah, when you lump in nine things, it's like, yeah, maybe I like 97% of it, but there's a piece that you don't, but then you're not gonna vote, I'm not gonna say no to these things because we need the funding for them, and they're right. But, so, I, all that to say, I don't have a strong opinion. I would, I would defer to you to the conversation around this. No, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, you may, you may, you, you may get into this, and you, and there may be conversation. You're like, you know what, that's.
I'm gonna remember this conversation. I'm gonna listen to the discussion during that, and I'm just gonna make a, fair enough? Okay, sounds great.
And all your votes are public record, so.
Great, then you guys can be super excited to see how I voted on this one.
That's GGWG. Go with your gut, Glenn Hill.
Go with your gut, Glenn Hill.
There you go. You can say that's the vote that I have.
And I'm pretty sure I will never look up what you voted.
Fantastic. Okay, nine, we are a yes. 10, we are a yes. 11, we are a yes. 12, we are a yes. 13, and 13A and 13 is one where we had some blanks. So, we need to look at those again because I think maybe we just don't really understand. This is starting on page 45. Yeah, so, one is, 13 is the original proposal, and then 13A is, someone's already made an amendment. Is that how that works, Gabe?
Yeah, what's, what's the next one? Who made the?
So, 13.
So, it's all from Tuck Willa?
So, 13, it was a proposal from the legislative committee, and then Tuck Willa said, okay, but we want to change it this way. So, these ones are.
It looks like their amendment is adding in the apportion payments distributed evenly through the year. My, my, my only fear with the budget stuff, to be honest with you, is all of a sudden WASDA is advocating for ways to help school districts that mismanage their budgets, and then they, and then they're like, all of a sudden, they're advocating for the state to essentially give certain districts more money because they're mismanaging it based on whatever the issues are, right? I mean, you look at like, I would be, and I think most people would be irritated if the state bailed out Seattle Public Schools to the tune of 100-some million dollars because of their decline in enrollment and all the others, for whatever reasons, right? That wouldn't be equitable or fair or whatever you want to say. So, that's my only fear with any of the budget stuff, is that it bells, it bells out somebody else that's mismanaging the money.
And to Lance is also, the other point is, is making the payments distributed evenly throughout the year, it would be our benefit if they weren't evenly throughout the year, if they were disproportionately earlier.
Yeah, I, it would, you, when you start school, like, sometimes you have that gap depending on when your taxes come in because remember with a levy, so you gotta, you gotta have a balance to pull, and if you don't, if you're only getting, it's better to have it to start the year upfront. And I'm okay with trueing us up at the end. So, in other words, like, hey, if we get, so a model that you would say is like, hey, you're gonna get 60% of your portion of the previous year upfront, and then the remaining payments, we're gonna go balance, balance, and we're gonna true you in your last payment, instead of saying, we're gonna withhold money to see how things work up. Because the, I would, would not want to get in a situation where all of a sudden we're getting a big influence of cash late because then it appears to potentially our, our staff that we were holding money, all of a sudden, we got a fund balance.
When you got to pay bills.
You want the other, right? Like, we want to make sure that we're doing that. And if you have X percent of your budget rolling into like levy, and you're collecting those only two times, typically that's in like June and December, because you have those two tax payments, you gotta cover that. So, that's the way I look at that funding.
Otherwise, you're gonna have a free loan for.
This is a simple cash flow issue.
Yeah.
We've gotta have money to operate regardless of the timing. We've got, when the bills come, you better have dough to pay.
Yeah, and I don't need them making interest. They can send a dozen. We can, I mean, there's, there's other aspects to it.
That's what I'm saying. Like, they don't need to sit on our money.
Correct.
We can sit on our money.
So, that's only one portion of this. The other part of it kind of goes back to what we already talked about in four where it, and I don't have to be honest, I'm not sure I understand it really perfectly well to understand what they're proposing, but just that budget or the funding will stay the same regardless of state budget changes, declining enrollment, or the assessed evaluation. This one doesn't look like it's talking specifically about levy authority.
So, the 13A, it looks like they took out this, the even distribution, correct?
I think they added it to 13A. I think the amendment is adding that, just that underline there, and I.
Is that 13 or 13A?
This is 13A.
Okay, 13A, so they, they added that.
So, 13 is actually just a consolidation. They're taking budget stability, enrollment decline, and no mid-school year budget cuts. Now, if it's no, if it's mid-year school budget cuts, I can be on board with that, but.
Well, the other thing that we don't want is, there's now, and this is in more than just one state, is legislatures starting to look at like fund balances and saying, hey, we can start to balance things when things don't go well because there's a deficit now, right? And if taxes, let's say receipts aren't coming in, I would, you know, we don't want any part of that because we also have local dollars that are contributed to ours, and they don't, we're not gonna let them, you know, touch that money. That's something that our constituents have said that we.
Are we, so we're?
I don't know. Where are you?
I mean, if we're, if we're talking about getting funds early and throughout the year, like, I'm for that. I think, yeah, getting them early, we can.
So, A13 would be opposed to, correct?
That's what it's, it's sounding like we like 13, which we haven't really looked at yet. And have some hesitation with 13A.
We don't want it to say that they're distributed evenly.
No, 13, I don't think.
Isn't that what they're adding? Yeah, 13A adds that they're distributed evenly throughout the year. We don't want that.
Well, how is it right now? I think evenly throughout the year would be an improvement from what it is.
It's like towards the end of the year, right?
Yeah, right now, it's towards the end of the year.
And what the, if you go back to the other one, it says there's a push to just push the dollars towards the end of the academic year. What I'm saying is, we want the opposite of that.
Yes.
But that one, that one's not on the table. What is on the table is evenly, which is better than what we got. Yeah, so actually, having it dispersed evenly is, that is an improvement from what we're doing right now.
Yeah, because either, I mean, we, we've seen the need for districts need that money, whatever, earlier because maybe they don't have a fund balance to work with to cover them for the apportionment, and they're losing money.
And if we're a yes on 13A, there's no reason to not be a yes on 13. It's just consolidating positions that already exist. They're saying, we're just gonna put them all together as one, so it's not, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Similar to what we just talked about with consolidation.
Just real, just listen to how they're describing the budgets, and I really cannot support anything that's gonna bail out school districts and their budget.
Sure, I agree.
That's my only issue. Other than that, fund everything. Let's do it.
Yeah.
I have like a core, I'll just tell you right now, I have a core thing where I just don't hold trust and log them, you know? And I don't, I don't do that well. I don't think it'd be a great job. So, like, if you're talking, I feel like you're always trying to like sneakily like get more and take from us or like mandate everything on us, and it's like, that doesn't work for us. Let us, let us manage. I have, I have like a core, I'll just tell you right now, I have a core thing where I just don't hold trust and lock that, you know, and I don't, I don't do that well, I don't think it'd be a great job, so like, if you, if you're talking, I feel like you're always trying to like sneakily like, get more and take from us, like, and like mandate everything on us, and it's like, that doesn't work for us, let us, let us manage our own stuff, you know, and obviously we can do a good job, I just, let us do that. So anything that has, doesn't do with my, anything that has to do with like, pulling stuff away from us and then mandated and determining what we can and can't do, and, you know, it'd be a good thing.
That's why it's hard when they're consolidating.
Yeah, exactly.
Seven different things, cause you don't know what-
Part of it, it's just tough.
That's fair. Um, okay, so that was thirteen, fourteen, we are a yes, fifteen, we can look at, um, how much more time do you want me to take on this?
You're good, no, you're good.
Looking over, I think this is probably the last one to discuss.
My, my stuff is maybe five minutes, we're-
Oh, okay, okay, great. So fifteen is on page fifty. And this is supporting student mental health and preventing self-harm, this is a consolidation again, so these are positions that already exist, they're not creating new positions, they're not removing positions, they're just saying, hey, we're gonna put all these positions together. So, um, you know, you can see the current position, there's a, there's one that's preventing self-harm and suicide, and then there's a separate one that's presenting substance abuse and overdose, a separate one that's mental health, supports and counseling access, and so then the proposed one is just combining them all together. So-
Can you go to the, the proposed one? I think it's-
Which one is it you wanna go to?
This-
I think this is the actual write-up, like their proposed-
Yeah, this is what they actually proposed.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is how-
It's a little different than just consolidation.
Well, I think that those things existed in the previous-
I guess my concern here is, is if they start mandating how many mental health counselors we have to have, or what services we have to provide, that's my only concern. I, always my concern here is, while in a perfect world, I'd love to have all of that, I can see them telling us we have to and then providing, under, under, underfunding it, that would-
Well, if you look at our nurses, you know, I think we're only, the state only pays for like four nurses and we have, you know, eighteen.
Yeah.
Twenty, or whatever, whatever the number is, and so that's, it's just gonna be one more thing, so whether, that's the type of stuff, we're, we're trying to find ways and we're finding ways to fund those things internally, because they're important to us. So now, are we gonna be able to put eighteen or twenty mental health counselors, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a big number.
Yeah.
So, not saying I don't want to, but what's, what's, how do we, how do we do that, you know?
And that's where, exactly, that's where I was saying, look, leave that up to us, what I don't want is the state to mandate something for us, that we now have to-
It's unfunded?
That goes unfunded or underfunded, and we have to try to figure out, scramble to figure out how to make it work.
What happens is if you just jump on every single one of these things, which like, like ideology, ideologically, it's like, yeah, that's a great idea, I love that, but then it's like, if you just jump on every single one of these, then you're rich, you know, and there's like eight million dollars, ten million dollars in the hole, and you just can't do it, you just have to like, you just can't do all the things.
And I might be totally wrong on this, but what I think, what I think this is saying is that, cause remember, this is not legislation.
Right.
This is just what WASDA's going to talk to the legislators about this fall, like, hey, these are what's important to us, this is what we would like to see done, so-
But that's my point, like, I'm nervous that they will come out and say, and as they have, you know, to your point, you need to have a nurse in each school and we'll fund for it.
Right, so I-
Prototypical, prototypical school.
Is it possible-
We have fourteen that are funded.
Exactly.
It, it, if you're interested in weakening, it sounds like there might be interest in weakening these interests, if that's the case, then putting them together actually may be the more effective strategy, because, I don't know, I actually don't know.
This, this, this goes to the example I was just talking about when they start combining all these, right? Preventing self-harm and suicide.
Cause they already exist, they're already positioned.
Right, preventing substance abuse, great, and now, now you're tying in mental health supports and counseling access, so-
But that was, that already existed too.
Right, but now, now you're putting them all together.
Yeah.
And you're asking at this point right now, like, I just, again, I, I prefer the, I guess, the single piece of it, because then you can, you can support or not support portions of things, right? So in this case, if you say no, then you're essentially saying no to everything, cause these are individual pieces right now.
Right.
They're not all together, so now we're saying, yes, we're gonna support three versus the three individual ones, and so that's where I, that's where I have the issue with consolidating all these, cause it's, it's like you're combining them to get support for, for some of, like, for instance, when you talk about onsite mental health counseling, what does that mean? Are, are, so now we're gonna be in the business of medical providers in our schools? I don't know, there's no information there, so-
Yeah.
And then, of course, you know, the funding's not gonna be fully funded, so-
Well, just thinking this through also, this is, I, I think one of the things that a lot of people, and Mike maybe even speaks to this better, cause you've got more experience with legislation, but gets irritating for the common person, if we look at some of these bills that get passed, they do exactly this, they consolidate fifteen different things to put it into one bill, and there's, because that, that way they can get the votes, but, but a lot of it's just pork, you know? This person's special interest project, this person's special interest product, project, but, but they know that, hey, people need to get it passed, well, why don't we just split it up so that, if we're, if we're providing our positions, why don't we each, why don't we speak to our position, rather than-
You are, you are such an optimist, I love this, you have complete faith in our governmental systems, I, sir, do not have that. That is just the way in the world, I mean, I, again, guys, these are all way bigger topics that we're gonna cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this stuff, whether we like it or not, you know, no one wants to see how the sausage is made.
Yeah.
And it's just an unhappy program, but you're just gonna get pork barrel issues, it's just what's gonna happen, so, until they take that away, it's just what, that's just the flat reality of the world, so, anyway.
But that's why I'm saying, for us, let's split it out.
It sounds to me like we're a no vote, we, we prefer to be split, but I just wanna make sure everyone understands that the positions are there already, they're not going anywhere, it's just, okay, all right.
Although there's slight difference in wording.
Sure, yeah. Okay, sixteen, we are a yes, seventeen, we are a yes, eighteen, we are a no, twenty-two, we are a no, twenty-three, we are a yes, and that is, oh, no, it's not, never mind, I had to scroll down a little bit, we aren't quite done yet, okay. Um, twenty-four, a yes, twenty-five is a yes, twenty-six is a yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I got off one.
Twenty-six.
Sorry, so sorry, twenty-four is a yes, twenty-five is a yes, twenty-five A is a yes, twenty-five is a yes, twenty-six is a no, twenty-seven is a yes, and that is-
Twenty-eight?
The last of it, twenty-eight doesn't actually exist yet, so that's just if someone has an emergency proposal, and I honestly don't know the process for having the emergency proposal, but-
What if they, they had ninety days, they have to-
They had ninety days.
Yeah.
I guess the emergency proposals are things that are under ninety days. So there you go.
Until it's not.
So-
Until it's not convenient for you.
Until it's not convenient, then we're gonna slap it right in.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if, if you, I sent you the login, so you should have the login.
Yeah, and they sent me one separately as well.
And then if you have questions throughout, I think, just reach out to whoever you, that answers and ask.
Yeah.
I think we're good with that.
Last year, they had two days planned, we had, uh, you know, there's twenty-eight proposals this year, last year there were forty-seven, I think, and we were done in half a day last year, so this year they've only scheduled it for just one day, I don't anticipate it being, there's nothing in here that's highly, you know, controversial, I really don't anticipate it being a longer, complicated process this year, so I think we'll be okay, but-
Thank you for doing it.
Yes.
You are welcome.
The one piece to this though too, is when they do this, so they do this, they go and lobby for this stuff, and then the legislators do the legislating, right, and then what happens? Oftentimes they send it back and they're like, hey, WASDA's gonna write the policy or WASDA's gonna do that, right, so, so it tends to come back to WASDA to, to kinda kick out whatever the policy and stuff looks like, so-
And there are some proposed, um, you know, some proposals here that may have some improvements to that, so I don't know, those are, actually, we'll see, we'll see how those things go.
It's all public records, anybody can get-
Yeah.
Any of the school districts' votes, it, it, all this stuff is only based on school districts that show up, so there's two hundred and ninety-five districts, and if twelve show up, then those are the twelve that are voting on the proposals unfortunately, but, um, that's how cookie crumbles.
I may be mistaken on this, I may be thinking of during the legislative session, but I think you can go onto the WASDA website and request just like an observer or guest's access, if you want to like observe the proceedings, so-
You don't.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's tantalizing to be there, so if you, if you really wanted to join in.
You don't have anything going on on a Saturday for a day.
Then-
Well, and guys, one thing that, you know, I'm gonna go back to this, I brought this up five times over the years, but the lobbying effort here is gonna be run by WASDA and everyone else.
Yeah.
If we want our own specific issues addressed and dealt with, I still believe we need to talk about having our own lobbyists, because this is, if you wanna affect change, we go in as Kennewick School District saying, hey, we're here to tell you about our issues in our city.
Yeah.
And I have been an advocate for this since day one, and I continue to believe this is the absolute correct direction for us to go, and Mike, if you have an issue, it's no longer what WASDA says, it's what we say. And if we wanna do that, that's how you affect positive change, when you have someone in their office every week, hey, where are we? Let me help you with this legislation, let me help you with this, that's how we get stuff done. So-
Where did we, we were at some discussions around it, but I think, I think with Dr. Pierce's retirement, we, we kind, I don't-
That's not entirely true, so, so Dr. Pierce and I did meet with one potential candidate, um, he was wonderful, he would be great, the trouble is, is that, um, with him, for example, and it would be the case with any lobbyist, we would just have to, or, or we would just have to do some work to find the right one. Um, there, he represents people that have conflicting interests with the board, and so he cannot go and lobby for two positions, and so while he was very willing and would have done a great job, there were some things that, in our conversation, I knew was important to the board and that he said he would not be able to lobby for. Also, the other argument, so that was just the one, but the reason we didn't pursue any other lobbyist is because you get into a little bit of an interesting position, because we have districts on the east side that have similar interests to us, that have lobbyists, and are already lobbying for the things that we would want a lobbyist to lobby for, and they're paying them. So we could hire a lobbyist, but unless we have our own very unique positions that we really wanna push forward, there are already people out there doing the work that we would be paying someone to do.
They're just not saying Kennewick School District when they're in their lobbying.
And so, Tracy, I did, and this kind of did run into retirement a little bit, um, we did have a conversation, and Mike and I have talked about this too, that Richland has a lobbyist, I think it's Richland.
Both Richland and Pasco both.
Richland and Pasco have a lobbyist, but it's not the same one, they have different ones, so we could talk with either of them, and I know that Tracy got the conversation started with each district, um, to see if we could join forces with one of their lobbyists and just kind of-
Like Pasco?
Do like a, a salary share or, you know, a bonus type situation and say, could you also mention Kennewick School District when you're lobbying for those things? So I do think it's a good idea, I think it's just been trying to find the right situation.
There are several lobbyists who are not currently advocating in the, in the academic space that would get into it.
Sure.
That are looking for, trust me, lobbyists will do whatever you tell them to do.
Right.
So there's no, so, and there are some that are very good, but again, to your point, no one, we're not gonna mesh up a hundred percent with any school district.
Yeah.
And so, again, eighty, twenty, ninety, ten, or if we can find someone that, that matches up, you know, eighty-five percent of what we're doing, then that makes sense.
Yeah.
Richland's goals may be different than ours, Pasco's may be different than ours, and so again, if we're, if we're, if we're veering off on some very specific areas that need our, that we would need our attention, we're better off to get our own.
Yeah.
Uh, again, trying to save some money, it, I'm all about it, but having an effective lobbyist standing there saying, hey, we need this, and here is why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it, it, it makes a difference. Trust me, you can't walk the halls without hitting eighteen lobbyists with a stick, so it's not like they're, they're short of, in, in shortism.
So, um, it's okay, I'd be happy to, cause I have met with all of our representatives and our senator, um, about different, like heading into the session, what that looks like, developing that relationship, I've also met with the area superintendents who are similar to us. I believe it'd be in our best interest to pursue this opportunity to see what we could come up with, and I would bring that back to the board so that we have, instead of speculation, we'd have actual proposals that we could pursue, and I could do that pretty quick order, cause I have some options available, just haven't had the opportunity to kinda get to this spot, since it organically came up here, I would, if that's the will of the board, I'd be happy to take that and bring something back as quickly as possible, October at the latest, cause I know that things get rolling, I mean, they, committee is, I mean, I get there in a biennial, but there's still things that are always happening, and my conversations with our local legislators have been very forthcoming with, you know, finding ways for them to support us. So that's what I would be, all, I'm all in on, um, I have some legislative ideas already, based on some stuff that we've been working on, so, I would, yeah.
Please, sorry, I'm, I'm tired, go ahead.
No, I'm done, I'm good.
I, I, Mike, I, I would agree, I think, I think the, the conversation from what I'm hearing is, is not, should we have a lobbyist? I think your point is exactly right, I think the question is, is do we, do we have more power and do we have more, do we get more bang for our buck? If it's, for example, if we talk to Pasco and Richland and the three of us, so now you're representing, the lobbyist when he's speaking is representing the entire tri-city area versus just Kennewick, and, and I, that's, I, I don't, that's what I'm asking, is that's-
Like everything else, it's, it's all individual dependent, you know, so, so who do you have? Do the legislators like this lobbyist, do they, do they trust what they're saying, you know, do they have good, you know, credit built up with them, this, this is something that takes, you know, it does take time.
Okay.
So, um, cause again, if they have a lobbyist they don't like, doesn't matter who you are, how much you're paying, they're just, they're not, they're gonna say, yeah, whatever, and they never make it past the threshold of their door, so it's more about finding people who are up to speed on it, or who can get up to speed quickly. But to your point, if we have someone who is now representing, you know, forty-five thousand kids, fifty thousand kids instead of nineteen, you know, that does change the, change the, the equation, so, because again, that's a, it's a larger block, and again, if you can find, you know, someone, even someone on the west side that has, that aligns with what we're doing in a larger district, again, that makes a difference. But again, the bigger they are, the more we're gonna have to give up, the more, you know, we're, we're now gonna start splitting off in this, in these issues, cause they're gonna have differences, funding issues that are not the same as ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, I think, I think for me, this is kinda the final, I, I feel like we're doing as much as we can advocating at WASDA and doing all this stuff, and this is kinda the final piece for us to just try to affect change at the levels that we can, um, and it's kinda the only thing we're, I guess, not necessarily doing from a lobby perspective, but I don't think we've ever had an actual discussion with like this, this is who, this is the cost, this is the, like, I don't think we've got to that point, so I, I mean, I would be totally open to like, getting to that point and, and kinda sifting through those and see what works with who, is it just us, is it everyone, like, I would, I would, I'd be interested for all that.
And I think from my discussion, what I'm hearing is, is all of us appear interested in a lobbyist and are saying, yes, we probably want a lobbyist, it's just, what I'd hope is maybe you can give us some options and saying, hey, here's, here are some people that you could go with solo, here are some people that are already in the, you know, this person's already in the education area, to Mike's point, here are some people that are looking to get in, here's the benefit of these people, and then here are some opportunities to collaborate with other districts, here are the benefits, here is the cost. Cost meaning here's the, the potential differences we might have that may not make it worth it.
Here's the other thing too, if we, if we go down that route, we find someone, we say individually, like this person's great, they're gonna lobby for Kennewick, I mean, we've got connections with tons of other districts across the state that would probably be willing, willing to jump in and, and share costs and, and know that we're, maybe we're at the ninety percent instead of the seventy-five percent or, or something, right?
That's what I think we could.
So I think it's just doing the legwork.
So I'll, I'll have that put together and I'll bring it back to the board so that we can have, at least we'll have options, and I, I concur, one of the things that I've noticed, especially with our local representatives, we're pretty aligned in our thinking about what we value and, and how we're going about funding education or, or meeting the needs of our students in our communities. What we need, however, not all of our local representatives are in the education committees, et cetera, so we need to have that bridge where they have connections that allows to have those conversations with someone maybe we don't have that personal touch with, and the other thing, but not that we have a ton of federal stuff, but I know that we have federal components that are coming into education, that there's a piece there that, that, you know- that there's a piece there that, that, you know, New House needs, you know, Representative New House needs to hear as well, and I met him as well. So I think it's, it's that component, that immediate piece, and also the big picture piece that we can have that's connected to us. So they can do more than just be an Olympia. I mean, it's just in, finding someone in that sector that has the connections, that has the ability to, to have conversations and is credible, that's a big picture. And that message is, because I've been sitting in a senator's office and all I see is people with green tags just lined up. And that's all the lobbyists who have the green, they're just lined up to see him, see him, see him. So, I can make that happen.
Great.
I just have a couple things to pick, if that's okay?
Yep.
So, um, the last two items on our agenda, we have the cabinet objectives, those will be in front of you, uh, September twenty-fourth, and we'll be able to go through those at that time. The reason I put them here is so that you know, uh, I believe last year there were something like seventy-one objectives and it was a pretty big list. What we have done is we've consolidated some of those items, number one, so that, not that it wasn't manageable, but I, I, we've taken a look at how are we going to measure those pieces? And I've started to put them in a format that ties everything back to student learning. Instead of just saying this is something that we're doing, how does it impact learning? So we're working on the formatting of that and I'll start explaining what that looks like for the board as kind of that preliminary piece. And then eventually that'll start getting into our school improvement plans in a similar format. So what are our kids learning, or why do our, what do our kids need to learn in order to get to the levels we want? What our adult needs to learn, how are we going to manage that as far as support systems, what are our look for's and feedbacks? So I'll get into all of that. I think we're down to about thirty-one now, so that helps us, um, because I keep saying, I want words off of walls and I want actionable items that we can remember and look for when we're going into schools. The last thing is the board priorities. I had the opportunity to meet with all of you individually. I'm going to take the ideas of the conversations that we would have and I'll consolidate into thematic components attached to the mission and vision of the school district. I'll send it, I'll actually, what I like to do is have Patty then send it to Gabe. Gabe can look at it and disperse like individually or whatever that looks like. And then when it comes back, we can discuss that, maybe in executive session. That then gets tied to my evaluation with superintendent's evaluation. So you have clear objectives that you will see that we are working on collectively to, to accomplish the mission and vision of the Kennewick School District. So that's the, the other component that I have.
Okay, great.
Great.
Does that sound good?
Okay, works for us. Any further discussion, questions before we adjourn the study session? Okay, we will adjourn the study session. We'll be back at five-thirty for the business session.